August 28, 2014 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Pastor Dennis Bragdon of our Redeemer Lutheran Church. Please stand.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let us begin with the words of the invocation. If you know them and would like to say them out loud with me, please feel free. "In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit."
Amen.
Amen. I share with you a reading from Matthew, Chapter 22, verse 15, and following. Probably be familiar. "Then the Pharisees went out and laid plans to trap Jesus in his words. They sent their disciples to him along with the Herodians. Teacher, they said, we know you are a man of integrity, that you teach the way of God in accordance with the truth. You aren't swayed by men, because you pay no attention to who they are. Tell us, then, what is your opinion? Is it right to pay taxes to Caesar, or not? But Jesus, knowing their evil intent, said, 'You hypocrites! Why are you trying to trap me? Show me the coin used for paying the tax.' So they brought him a denarius. And Jesus asked them, 'Whose portrait is this? And whose inscription?' 'Caesar's,' they replied. Then Jesus said to them, 'Give to Caesar what is Caesar's, and to God what is God's.' When they heard this, they were amazed. So they left him and went away. We shall pray in a moment that the Lord will bless you in your meeting discussions, deliberations, and decisions tonight, that you may indeed render to Caesar that which is Caesar's, and to God that which is God's. Let us pray. Eternal Lord, ruler of all, graciously regard all those who have been set in positions of authority among us, especially our elected leaders gathered here this evening, the City Council of Longview, that guided by your Spirit they may be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution, and unwavering in duty, that under them we may be governed quietly and peaceably through Jesus Christ, your Son, our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever.
Amen.
Amen. We continue with the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Passive. Wonderful, wonderful scripture. Thank you.
Blessings on your meeting.
Same to you. Citizen comment, Mr. Vic Verma.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council. As many of you know, I'm the regional lead for organizing for action here in East Texas, which is President Obama's issue advocacy group. One of the things we also do is try to have forums with those who, to talk about issues, even with those who may disagree with us. So with that in mind, we're pleased to announce that next Thursday at 6:30 PM at the Idelman Room at Mott Cobb Activity Center, or Convention Center, we're proud to have and pleased to have Representative David Simpson as our featured speaker as part of our immigration forum that we'll be holding. He will be speaking about his trip that he made to the Texas-Mexico border during, and I believe he made that trip at the height of the crisis with the Central American children that came. It is open to the public. Questions can be asked at the event. We encourage everyone to come. I know you all have a council meeting. If you can get out early enough, feel free to come by at 6:30. If you're late, you're just as welcome. So we'd love to have a really nice showing and show that even when we disagree on things that we can talk about issues.
Good point, Vic. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. Thanks.
Presentation item of the Convention and Visitor Bureau in Main Street, Kayla Canty, Longview Chamber of Commerce. How you doing? Man, I saw you brought the boss lady, too.
I did. She's here.
Got the brass here tonight, yeah.
Well, thank you all for letting me come and speak. The majority of my presentation will be on the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and just an overview of what we did last year, some of the numbers from last year. Okay, so these are some of the numbers that we have from last year. Our calendar events, we print 1,500 per month to mail out to residents, hotels, businesses. And so that's per month, 1,500. And then small group meeting serviced, we had 31. That's not all of the small groups that came to Longview last year. Those are just the ones that we help service. We help get venues for the events. We help, we give welcome bags, we do name badges. So that's kind of how we service those meetings. The hotel rooms that came from those 31 meetings, 7,134. And then along with those hotel rooms, the welcome bags, 4,033. And those welcome bags are given to the ones that are staying in our local hotels. And then visitor guides, these are guides that are requested, whether they're in our visitor center, or through email, or in any of those. So that's 19,031. Those are also the visitor guides that are included in our welcome bags. So that number is included in the 19,000. The visitor guides distributed to travel centers and hotels. Every year, we send out visitor guides to different travel centers throughout the state of Texas and some outside of the state of Texas. That's around 23,000 a year that we send out. And then the e-brochure is a brochure that they request through our website or through email, and we'll email them a brochure. And so that's around 3,600. And then our visitor center guest is 1,754, which is a higher number than the year before that. We remodeled the visitor center, and so we're getting a lot more people coming in. And also, something that I'm going to talk about later in the presentation is our wayfinding signage. That's helping them come to our visitor center. It's pointing them in the right direction. Okay, so these are some of the rack cards that the Convention and Visitor Bureau helps make and distribute. So we did six, we printed 6,500 for Alley Fest and 3,200 for the Great Texas Balloon Race. Currently, we're working on the T-Bone Walker Blues Festival rack card and distributing those. Along with the rack card, we also advertise in magazines, and I'll have a list of those magazines coming up on the next, a couple of slides. Wayfinding, I'm not sure if any of you all have noticed while you're driving around town, we have new signage. We completed Phase Two of wayfinding this last year, and out of four phases. So this is something that the Convention and Visitors Bureau teams up with our Main Street Department, and we work together to try to have signage for the visitors in town to find their way to Event Center, Multimodal Center, Visitor Center, Downtown, all those main attractions that we have. This is our new visitor guide design. This is just some of the new visitor guide that we have. We wanted to make it fun. We wanted people to look at it and say, "Ooh, I want to come to Longview, Texas." So we have hotel listings, restaurant listings, and then we have subcategories like Girls Weekend, Arts and Entertainment, Lake Country. And all those have specific things underneath it, or specific venues underneath those that we list out to help people find something that they'd like to do here in Longview. And then these are just some of the places that we've advertised with in the past year. You can see magazines, some of those are websites online. And then the publications that we run, we want to coincide with the new visitor guide. So we wanted continuity in our message. So most of them will look the same as some of the pictures that we have in our visitor And then these are just a few of the travel shows that we attended last year. And the next one coming up this year will be at the Albuquerque Balloon Fest. Elaine Reynolds will be going to that for us. And this is just a few of them. And we go to these shows to get, to have one-on-one time with the people who are interested in Longview. And we answer specific questions to promote our community to them. And this is an example of the calendar events, of events that we send out. This is for, the one for the month of August. You can also go online, longviewchamber.com/events, and that will give you the whole year's worth of events that we have. And events that we post on our website are for the, events that are for the public and that might appeal to visitors here. Trying to, there. And then Discover Longview, this is the last thing I'm going to talk about. This is a program that we've been having for a while. It used to be called the Hospitality Training, and we changed the name recently to Discover Longview. It's a free event that you can go to, is a free program. You get a certificate at the end. And the next one is October 3. Basically, we take a tour around Longview and the areas around Longview to show people what we have to offer. And this can be for residents, new employees of a business, anyone that wants to know more about Longview. It's free, and we also provide lunch. The next one is October 3. So if you haven't gone, I encourage you to go. And that's it. Do you all have any questions?
Is that all you had going on all your life? Okay, great job. Questions? Yes, ma'am?
Good job, Kayla. Thank you for sharing all the different promotional things that you're doing with the CVB. That's important. Do you all conduct an audit of those dollars every year, a detailed audit? Do we have one?
We do have an auditor. And that's provided to the city.
I haven't seen one yet, but I would, have we received anything?
Yes.
A detailed one?
Do we have that, Angela, for this last year?
Okay.
We probably need, we need to provide that to council.
Yes, please, Angela, share that with council. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all so much for having me.
All righty. Consent agenda. Any item to pull for separate consideration? I have a motion to approve. Second in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Our action item, considering ordinance authorizing the issuance, oh, here goes raising that debt again, in sale of city, Longview Tech, general obligation refunding bond series 2014, John Martin, Southwest Securities.
Thank you, Mayor, council. We have great news tonight. We had been visiting with staff for a few months and watching the bond market and interest rates continue in a downward direction, and makes sense to look at refunding some of your existing debt. Specifically, these are the 2005 bonds that were, that are out there that are actually up for redemption. We can pay them off early, beginning June 1 of 2015. So we're coming up on that date. So we took bids for the refinancing, and we decided to do this on a private placement basis, because it's a smaller amount, and it's a short maturity, only like five years. So we took bids, and if the, in the packet that Angela passed out to everybody behind tab one is a bid tabulation form, and we received eight bids. These were due at 3 o'clock yesterday afternoon, and they're from all over the place, and the rate, interest rates that are bid are all over the place. The low bid came from American National Bank of Texas. They're based in Terrell, and provided a 1.44%. Let me repeat that, 1.44%.
And where are they located?
They're in Terrell.
Terrell.
Now, Southside Bank came in second. They're the far right-hand column out of Tyler. So 1.46%, 1.464. So they were just a little bit off. It was a real tight race there. And then we had another there, TIB, that's out of Irving, then BB&amp;T Government Capital, they're out of Charlotte, North Carolina. So there's quite a spread here. Regions, based in Alabama, they were number five. And then we got First Bank and Trust, East Texas, that was here, local. Capital One, local branch as well. So we got some nice local participation there, but it was, it's hard to beat that, beat the Terrell Bank there at 1.44%. So the savings we calculated throughout the city will save $246,000 as a result of this transaction. Behind that tabulation is the bid term sheet of each one of the bidders that came in. We're putting that in there just in the issue, in the interest of transparency to show you everything. Behind tab two is, the meat and potatoes really of the deal, I'll just hit on this. It shows you the sources and uses of funds, that the city is going to issue 5,975,000. That's going to be replacing those '05' bonds, and we'll use that to deposit to the escrow for that June 1 call of 5,909, about 5,910. Cost of issuance, about 65,000. So instead of doing a publicly offered deal where those costs would be well over 100,000, we're saving some money there, and it makes some sense to do it this way. The next sheet shows you sideways, landscape piece, shows you your existing debt service, the debt that's being refunded, those payments that are being refunded, and then layering in the new bonds. And then you can see in the far right-hand column how much the city will save each year between this year and 2019, about $50,000 a year. So tax off the INS side, okay? So again, net present, the savings, debt service savings, about 245,000, and present value dollars, about $239,000. So we're now at 1.44%, and we're refunding debt that had 3.97%. So pretty significant there. Not a big deal, but every little bit helps.
Not a big deal.
So.
Very big deal. Let me make a comment, and to go back to our discussion earlier in our work session, not to be the straw man or the pickle, Mr. Manley, but the reason that we're able to do this is because of the city's financial strength, and our AA- rating has a heck of a lot to do with this. So I believe that what this council has done for a number of years now has been very fiscally conservative, but yet we've also recognized the needs of the citizens in order to do projects as we have done, because, again, we're getting things done, but we're also receiving super favorable, you know, rates of interest for money that we're using to help hopefully improve the quality of life of our citizens. Some on the very far conservative side may think that we shouldn't be doing these things, but we have a general public that we represent to try to make sure that we're doing things to improve the quality of life of all of our citizens. So thank you to Southwest Securities for getting these great bids for us. At that, I'll ask for a motion unless anybody else has any comments.
So both.
I have a motion. Second in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
That was worth signing all that stuff with that pen. I didn't even get to keep the pen.
Talk to Shelly.
But it wasn't a mall bonk, so I ain't gonna keep it. Yeah. Okay, budget items. Item A, Discussion of the Proposed 2014-2015 Budget. Now, you want to go back over that slide again?
Yes. Make sure we're.
Yeah. Okay, Ms. Willis.
Okay.
That thing's got smoke on it, you done running up there so many times.
I'm telling you.
To get a new one. It's got some scars on it.
Now, we have put in these numbers on the revenues and expenditures. That is updated from the last budget meeting, where we took out the fees and did all those adjustments. And then that also incorporated the increase in revenue from the Harrison County Appraisal District in those numbers. So that's kind of where we are now. I do want to point out that our beginning fund balances, we've talked a lot about fund balance, this is a projection that we're going to end up with at the end of this September, the 11 million 5. And of course, that's a projection, because we won't know until, you know, mid-November, early December, exactly what the final numbers were at the year end. So, you know, depending on year-end savings that we might have, or, you know, if things happen and we have some more expenditures, that can change that. But I want everybody to understand that that is a, you know, an estimate. So with that, now, I want to kind of get a little understanding on the 500,000 for the animal shelter. Am I hearing that we kind of want to take that out off the table and replace that with a fire engine, or?
No. I think, I think Mr. Manley has suggested that, and I understand what Richard's saying, but somewhere, somewhere in the grand scheme of things, I think with the discussions that I had with you and understanding what you were doing there, that's almost a worst-case scenario. But if, if, I mean, we can have a debate about what should show up as a one-time capital expense or not, but if we, you know, if it was council's, you know, interest in pulling that off for now, I don't really have a meat person, I don't have a big problem with that. But I don't recommend that we turn around and use that to go purchase fire truck. Chief, you okay with that?
Serve the footage for the council.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right, all right. But I'm just saying, I mean, if we're gonna, I mean, if we're gonna do it to try to maybe stay with line items of capital and not use it for operational-type things, I mean, I get that. I don't really have a problem with that. But I wouldn't want to turn around and put it back in reserves to go buy a fire truck when I heard, I think during this whole budget season, that that's something we can put off. If money was no object and it was the perfect world, yeah, we'd go buy 10 of them things. But that's not what we exist in today. We've got to prioritize or try to, you know, spread our money.
Of course, when we look at the next year's budget, then, you know, we'll have a fire engine on the table, and it's going to be a little tougher next year to try to do it. And that was the purpose of, you know, putting the operations money aside for right now, because depending on what council decides as far as the operations of an animal shelter, should it go forward, who's going to do it, or whatever, if the city or whatever entity that may be, it's gonna, we're gonna have some real increased operations. And so we're, we're trying to get a little ahead of the game, I guess, and put some back for that. But just on a pure business and management standpoint, it's, it's not good to use reserve money just for operations. But the idea behind it was try to get a little ahead of the game for next year.
And I was gonna point, it was just to try to get ahead.
That's.
And I've always felt like that's maybe the worst-case scenario, because until, okay, just one second, Mr. Sims. You know, right now, we're waiting on, and we can debate on, and I'm gonna get with Keith Bonds later, but I sure thought you told me sometime October, but that's okay. We get those plans back. But until we know what it's going to cost to build, you know, we don't really know what it's going to cost to operate. We got to get that number so we can really, you know, crank down on the numbers to understand. And then from there, there's like three different options on the table right now as far as operation, one being the city, one being as a task force recommended, a nonprofit organization to do it, and then also the Humane Society is, and of course, I was wrong earlier about the letter you sent, but I don't think I was wrong. But anyway, it's, y'all, y'all have expressed maybe some interest in, okay, so to me, the chronological events is we got to find out what it's going to cost. We got to find out what it's going to cost to operate it. By whom is it going to be operated by? So that 500 could end up shrinking.
We don't know.
Increasing, we just don't know. Yes, sir, Mr. Sims?
Mayor, I'd like for us to leave this alone. We've made our decision, and why come in at this late date and start changing things? Of course, if the council wants to vote on it, that's fine, but that doesn't seem necessary. We've made our decision, let's stick with it.
Okay. The decision will be made once, on the whole animal shelter and everything else, once the vote's cast. But this is strictly a matter of the budget, and I would, I would suggest that let's, let's table this till the next meeting. Everybody's got a chance to ask questions, talk about it. And at that point in time, we can decide. I mean, I understand, I hate to sound like a fence writer, but I understand both sides of this. But, but I think he put it in there for that reason, so that next year, not me, but y'all aren't saddled with having to put both operations and another fire engine, that kind of stuff in there. So let's, is it okay with council? Let's, let's kick it. Yes, sir.
That's a cushion.
So let me.
That's a cushion.
I, with regard to the tabling idea, I was actually where I was headed, because I would like to ask, or have the council consider that we asked Mr. Willard to come back and tell us, if we don't put that 500,000 of operational monies there, what could you do with it? And speaking to the truck issue, yeah, I agree, in an ideal world, we'd have as many trucks as we could possibly have, and, but the logic of, and the argument I was making for buying the two trucks right now is that that is what is part of the fleet vehicle recommendation or replacement program. And again, I would readily acknowledge that that doesn't mean we have to do it that way. But again, the logic of it, why it would have been there had this not been there, was because, as I understand it, that every year, we are going to replace a vehicle or two and put a, and put a new vehicle in place, because we don't want to be depending upon old vehicles that will cost more to maintain, may or may not be dependable, and we might need it, and it can't go where it needs to go, because it's broken down somewhere, because we've gone too long. So that's the logic to me of putting something in there other than that, and maybe that should be a truck.
Now, let me ask you a question. What we need to find out is, I know, I know we were accumulating those fleet replacement dollars.
Right.
And I don't know if we've extended those, expended those, or not there.
Let me clarify that a little bit. Our fleet replacement fund is designed and set up and is operating for your primary rolling stock, pickups, cars, vehicles like that, police vehicles. The large items, like a vacuum truck, or a roller.
Sanitation.
Or sanitation truck, or fire engines, we don't have in our vehicle replacement fund per se, because, you know, if we did that, it would just balloon everybody's budget up.
Right.
You know, so we try to do that out of these one-times pay cash form, or you can, you know, you can lease them. There are lease programs that, you know, we can get, but then still, that adds money to your operations budget for the lease.
But I know we've tried both ways, cash fund, and we've leased, didn't we lease?
We've done that in the past.
And I'm not sure how that, you know, how that, you know, financially works out for us. Yes, ma'am?
It's normally a five-to-seven-year term, and with the interest rates now, it, it could be about 3%. So, you know, it's up to council what they'd want to do with it.
Well, I'm, in talking with Richard, or hearing what Richard's saying, though, if you're not talking 750 as a pay, as a, as a buy, but you're talking about some amount of lease, and I understand that it's over five to seven years, but at least it doesn't have that one-time huge impact on your, on your reserve.
So we can, oh, excuse me. So we can come back and, I mean, I can, we can get you some figures on that, what it would, if you want to lease, and I think it was, was it one engine or two engines that you were requesting, chief, this year?
There were two that were in the replacement schedule for this year, our replacement schedule, not the fleet replacement.
Yeah.
So the two were for this year, and then there's another one that's coming up next year that costs as much as the two that we're trying to replace this year.
So the two engines are 500 apiece, a million dollars, and a ladder truck's a million, one or two?
1.3.
1.3. So last year, we did a ladder truck, wasn't it?
This, this current budget year, yes.
Well, this current one, but the, yeah, we did a ladder truck and, and got that out of the way, and we were, you know, talking about that. But as you can see, I don't have, I don't have a million dollars to.
Even if you got rid of it.
To do that. To do that. I mean, without doing other adjustments we could.
Yeah, but we just mentioned, so why don't we go, maybe, maybe we can't do all of my, and, and what Richard said about we're going to get ourselves to where now all of a sudden we got to replace a whole bunch of them at one time and we've been there before.
Yes.
Okay, we're trying not to get there, but I, I would suggest that maybe we look at being able to lease and see what that would cost, at least one this year and, and kind of see, see what that looks like. The other thing is on the fleet replacement for that larger stock, explain, I mean, because I remember when we did the fleet replace program now, I mean, that was a grassroots deal. We just started.
It took us four or five years to get that up and down.
But what about doing it, even if it's just for fire trucks, since you, you know you're going to have that, that type of replacement consistent.
Again, we charge out the amount of amortization to, to buy a 500,000 truck for, to each department. And so if you allocate every, it would, it would balloon the fire department operation budget way up there to, to, to amortize 500 or a million dollars in their operational budget. And that's how we, over time, built up our fleet replacement.
But don't, but don't they take a one-time hit to their department budget?
No, that comes up, no, because it's coming out of, out of our reserve fund balance. We're paying cash.
You asked the same question I was going to ask. Well, let me ask him, chief. The, I understand that it's not part of the fleet replacement program, so I was using the wrong words, but without getting too much inside baseball, I'm assuming you're using some type of system that all fire departments use that recommends that a certain truck can last so long before it needs to be replaced, before it becomes unreliable?
Right, we do.
Can you speak to that?
About four years ago, we sat down and really, well, actually before that, the mayor remembers back in the mid-'90s when we found ourselves in this huge hole in terms of our fleet, our rolling stock, and that prompted us to really sit down and develop a schedule. And, and over time, we've kind of learned how long we can expect our trucks to last and hope that we can get a good life of them as a service, in, in the frontline service and then still get some usable life out of them as a reserve. Because our reserve fleet is just as important as our frontline fleet. That's what keeps our continuity of service going out on the street. So we've developed a schedule that is what we've been going by, at least I know for the last four years, you, you've already made purchases off of that schedule, off of those recommendations. It seems like every budget year, you know, to now. And it's not just like everyone else's. It's the one that we've customized for our city because all the cities are different. You know, we use our apparatus in different ways. We may have a higher call volume than other cities. So it's, we, I know Dwayne actually did a study on this, a statewide deal and it, it's, it's kind of all over the board. Now, it's funny that there were some similarities between cities our size and, and other ones across the state where we were pretty well in the ballpark with those other cities.
Okay.
We, we've learned through those hard lessons that it's better to have a plan and it certainly to try and stick with those plans when we can so we don't find ourselves in that deficit of having to try and replace three or four in one time because that, that tends to hurt.
Yeah. And, and, and that's kind of what we're talking about right now with not doing at least, at least trying to look at something this year so that next year doesn't somewhat bottle up a little bit, okay? But, but again, you don't know, like Mr. Willard said, with that, with that number that up there, that's, we won't know for sure till November. So anyway, okay, anybody else have any question? Okay, thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief.
So along that line, let's say you, and then back to, so, okay, on the 500,000, how do you want us to, to proceed or what?
And it's just my, my thought is if for, you know, accounting purposes, if you will, we wanted to not have that there, okay? But knowing in the back of our head that we may have to come back once we get the numbers in on the shelter and, and figure out exactly who's going to operate it and everything else, what kind of monies we're going to need, we're probably coming right back to the same place.
And so I think Mr. Manley alluded to this, you can always amend the budget.
Yeah.
During the year or however you, you know.
You know, personally, what I've, I've always thought is, is to try to think everything through, do as much you can now so that you don't have to amend the budget. Now, you're going to have those situations that come up where you got, you don't have any other choice, but if at all possible, you know, put a budget in place and follow your budget and, and do everything you can not to have to amend it and, and take care of it in the next budget cycle. Yes, ma'am.
I think you answered my question, but I guess my pleasure is at this time, since we are where we are, I would rather see us have that as a cushion in the event we have any issues that come up during this process.
Well, one issue going to come up is.
Finance.
If, if council votes to, you know, build the shelter when that, when we get all the numbers in, we're, we're probably having to go back there. But again, from accounting practice, if we were to move it back into reserve, but, but I'm, I'm personally not for going, finding some other place to spend it. And then if we got to come back to that again, we're already precariously low at 11.73. We're going to go lower than that.
Because if we move it back into reserve, it's going to be unmarked. It's not going to be designated funding, right?
No, it'd just be in our fund balance.
It'll be in our fund balance. So that means even though we're saying.
Let's, why don't, again.
One thing, it could be potentially go a different direction.
We're, we're in the process of finalizing a budget. The council can kind of sleep on that, chew on that and come back at the next meeting.
The only other thing on the, the raise now, if, I think that number was 148,000.
148,000.
Out of the general fund and 217,000 to all the funds. So our budget is balanced now. If we need another 200,000, I'm going to have to cut somewhere, so.
Mr. Manager, I'm, I'm going to make a comment about that. You know, there, there are a lot of issues with giving raises and I don't disagree about, you know, where some of the hourly rates are, but, but we've studied and developed a pay plan, okay? And everybody that comes to work for the city in a specific job knows what the city pays. There are a lot of repercussions for us singling out a group to get a raise. And I know you're saying there's some differences at the top level, okay? But we went through a lot of pains to put together a pay plan. And if you're going to start taking and singling out a group, okay? And, and not only that, you know, I can't tell you every one of the repercussions are, are things that this causes, okay, in, in the, the system, but it does. And in my opinion is, you know, we, we've said we're not doing raises this year because of all of the things that we're trying to get done this year in that budget and, and I, I would vote for if we're going to give a raise to one, you give a raise to everybody. And if you can't give a raise to everybody, don't do it. And I think it's been determined, we can't do it. And, and we can continue to, to discuss and review our pay rates for the hourly people and whatnot. I mean, it's good, it's good discussion. It, it should be out there and, and again, I, I can't hire anybody. My business, I don't know about rich or anything else, it's some of what we pay to start people out, but, but it's, it's what the pay rate is for that job. And when people interview, they know what the pay rate is, okay? So I, I'm, I'm for leaving that out of the budget and moving forward, you know, with the budget. Floor is open.
And this is what I'll ask. I totally understand, we've discussed this already offline. What I will ask is that we move, as a council, we move forward and as a city, both to the city manager and staff, we should never be in a position where we say we are not giving our employees raises. We should never be in that position. And so I will ask at this time that in the next budget cycles, we are not in a position where we're doing that. So that if we can, so that we can be in a position to fairly compensate our employees for the jobs that they do. And not only that, the across the board, I know that that was something that you guys put in place prior to my joining the council and I know a lot of blood, sweat and tears went into it. But that being said, pay for performance. We need to have a better merit system.
The merit system.
Some type of system in place. So that is my recommendation regardless of how this issue turns out because I don't feel like we're isolating a group. I think that we should, should not have any people that are work, employees of the city of Longview that are some close to the poverty level. We just should not have that, not being a local municipality our size. So in the years to come, we will be able to show if we have a good budget, if we are not sitting here saying we can't afford to give our employees raises. I, I'm a little embarrassed by it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Yes, sir.
I'm sorry I didn't do this earlier, but we started down on the other one. With regard to that 500,000, I'd like the council to also consider this. The, as you said, the 500,000 is likely a worst-case scenario. In speaking with the director of the, of Humane Society and maybe Mr. Willard can confirm it, I think our cost this year to pay the Humane Society is around 375,000, something like that.
Yes, sir.
Maybe go into four next year as they continue to grow and anticipate expenses, but that, that in, and I know what that implies. Okay, so let me just say it this way. If we build, when we build the animal shelter and we decide, if we decide that we're going to contract with them as we have in the past, then we won't need that 500,000. And the likelihood is, I think, we wouldn't have it built by the end of this coming fiscal year anyway, would we not? If we did, it'd be very close to the end of the fiscal year, I believe. So again, please consider that I, I think we don't need that 500,000 for those two reasons also and we could use that 500 grand somewhere else. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? All right, council, let's move to B, the public hearing of proposed tax rate.
Good evening. This is the first of two public hearings as required by the state statute. The proposed tax rate is 50.99 cents per $100 evaluation. The second pub, public hearing will be held September 4th. This requires a public hearing.
Okay, public hearing is now open. I have no speaker cards. Is there anyone like to speak to this matter? If not, public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion? Second in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item of community interest was. Pass?
Pass.
Boy, that was quick. All right, Mrs. Garrett.
Oh, first of all, school has started. Watch your speed, watch your driving with a cell phone and texting because they're definitely in those school zones, Mr. Mayor. I also want to say, I guess I said last meeting, it's, it's, Southside's having its 14th annual area picnic this weekend, a reunion is what it's called. It starts at 12 o'clock on Saturday and it extends out to Monday. Free food, that's what they said. If you want to come out, come out at 12 o'clock on Saturday, Sunday and Monday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Casham.
I guess just happy Labor Day, everybody.
There you go.
Enjoy some barbecue and hot dogs and everything else that goes with Labor Day.
Okay.
That's it. I don't think I have any of these coming up.
I want to know what else went with Labor Day, but I'll go, I'll pass. Ms. Kristin, Mrs. Richard?
God bless Longview, God bless America.
There you go. Okay. Hey, before we start.
Excuse me, I need to offer a motion to excuse Councilmember Sidney Allen, please.
I have a motion? Second in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay. He's up there watching us right now. I just want to recognize we have a guest tonight, Steve Altmiller, the CEO from Good Shepherd. Hey, thanks for coming and continue doing the great job you're doing, Steve. Okay, public is invited. I think, no, oh, National Night Out kickoff event on Tuesday, September 9th, 6 o'clock at the Maud Cobb Activity Center at 100 Grand Boulevard. There will be emergency vehicle display and other fun festivities or activities for the entire family. You can call longviewtexas.gov if you need more information. 2014 State of the City Business Luncheon, ha-ha, will be Friday, September 19th, 2014 at Pinecrest Country Club, beginning at 11:30 a.m. Contact the Longview Chamber at 903-237-4000. I can tell you, this is going to be a very interesting State of the City. The Longview Police Department accepting applications for this year's Citizen Police Academy. Police Academy will begin Thursday, September 11 and end on Thursday, October 23rd. The hours of the academy will be from 6:30 to 8:30. Contact Assistant Chief Mike Bishop, who was here earlier, at 903-237-1149. Council meeting is adjourned.